5:34 PM by my watch and I am calling this meeting in order. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comments, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Roll call, please.
Member Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Santinas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. I remember three, Mrs. Stewart.
We have one item tonight for closed session. It's Conference with Real Property Negotiator. The property under discussion is 9030 Somerset Boulevard. Negotiators myself, negotiating party is Dennis Bukowski and Giovanni Di Edgideo, and the price and terms of payment are under discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Is there anybody from the City Council that has any conflicts regarding this evening's closed session item? Okay, hearing none, is there any member of the public wishing to make any comments regarding this item?
Mayor, this is Karen. At this time, the Clerk's office has not received any requests for public comments on the closed session item.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Deputy City Clerk. I'm going to read this just in case if there's anybody here. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature under the Participants tab. Or if by telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the Deputy City Clerk in the order received. Your microphone will be then unmuted so that you can provide your comments. So after reading that, unless there's anything different, Madam Deputy City Clerk, I'm assuming there's nobody to comment, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so hearing that, then let's recess to closed session. We will not recess to closed session. Public participation is not allowed during closed session. The virtual meeting will remain open during the penancy of the closed session. Upon concluding, we will resume the open session and announce any reportable actions from the closed session at that time. It is 5:30 PM by my watch. It will recess to closed session.
Hey, Mayor, you should turn off Sunny's video.
Should I log out?
Sunny, yes, you should log out. Thank you. I'm trying to turn off your video, but I don't have the control to do that.
2020, we are reconvening for open session. Our City Council took no reportable action during our closed session. It is 7:02 by my watch and I'm calling this meeting in order. Before I do a roll call, I wanted to let everyone know that we're going to be taking one item out of order. So item 12C will be placed at the end of our City Council. So to those of you interested in item 12C, I just, we're going to have to wait a little bit, but it'll be worth it. With a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Santinas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we will do our invocation. That'll be done by me this evening. So with that, we appease by your head. Dear Lord, we come before you as we gather here virtually tonight. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide our thoughts and our actions so that way we may have a successful meeting. On behalf of our great city, our residents, our businesses, all in an effort together to work together and navigate these unprecedented times we are living through at the moment. We ask that you please be with the men and women in uniform in our community and abroad who bravely serve our communities and our nation every single day. We also ask that you be with the families and businesses affected by COVID-19 to give strength to all our neighbors currently fighting it, to those among us who risk themselves daily by serving in hospitals, in public safety, in our grocery stores, or delivery services, and all essential services, including our city staff. All in service and for the benefit of our community. We also pray for the victims of COVID-19 that are with you and that are with you in peace. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
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 Thank you. Next up, we have City Council announcements. So I'll start it off. As the COVID-19 pandemic continues to spread, the California Department of Public Health issued a face covering guidance. They are recommending Californians to wear cloth face coverings in public meetings and public settings when conducting essential activities, especially in areas of significant community-based transmission such as grocery stores. Such as grocery stores. Individuals should also continue practicing social distancing along with washing your hands frequently. Cloth face coverings recommended are not surgical masks or in 95 respirators. Those kinds are critical supplies that must continue to be reserved for our healthcare workers and other medical first responders. To learn more information about the face covering guidance, please visit Mayor Protem Dankoops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scammers are taking advantage of fears surrounding COVID-19. The Federal Trade Commission has provided some tips to help provide you to keep scammers away. Number one, hang up on robocalls. Scammers are using illegal robocalls to scam coronavirus treatments or ask for your personal information, like your social security number and bank information. Ignore online offers for COVID-19 vaccinations and home test kits. There are no FDA-authorized home test kits for the coronavirus. Number three, do not respond to phone calls, texts, or emails about checks from the government. Anyone who tells you they can get you money is a scammer. The federal government most likely has the information it needs to send you your check. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Sunny Santinas.
Thank you, Mayor. In relation to the COVID-19 pandemic, if you are 65 years and older, pregnant, or at crisis health conditions, you are at the high risk of more serious illness or complications. It is important to monitor your symptoms closely and seek medical care early if they get worse. If symptoms worsen or continue and you need to seek medical care, call your healthcare provider in advance or in emergency, call 911. If you have additional questions, please visit www-publichealth.laccounty.gov. Or if you need help finding a healthcare provider, please call 211, the county information line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Member. Councilmember Santinas. Councilmember Raymond.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the City of Bellflower's response to COVID-19, the Parks and Recreation staff will be conducting wellness checks and phone calls with the Bellflower seniors that are registered in these current programs. These calls provide a safe and convenient way to check on the well-being of our seniors and their current needs and connect them with the resources that they need. If a senior cannot be reached in a prolonged period of time, staff will coordinate an onsite wellness check along with public safety. For more information on this program or to register for the program, please call 562-866-8614. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, all Bellflowers facilities are closed to the public as a caution in the interest of public safety until further notice. In addition, the city is canceling or postponing city events and recreation classes through at least April or until further notice. Although our lobbies will be closed, our staff will be answering calls and emails. If you need to reach us, please call 562-804-1424. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Okay, great. Up next, item number nine, Mrs. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the messages listed below, page two. You'll be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. If you're a member of the public and would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature under the Participants tab if you're in Zoom, or if you're joining us by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the Deputy City Clerk in the order received. Your microphone will be then unmuted so that you can provide your comments. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make any public comments this evening?
Mayor, at this time, I see one raised hand only, and that is Mr. Will Zapata.
Okay, great. Mrs. Zapata.
And Mr. Zapata, at this time, I will unmute your microphone and you will be provided three minutes for public comments, and the timer will start once you start speaking.
Thank you very much. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you. I really like your opening prayer. My hat's off to you. You know, I'm a concerned father. I have two children that have had health issues, open heart surgery. I've been donating plasma and I have another daughter with asthma. I recently adopted the daughter with asthma. But I have a concern regarding all the 5G towers that are going around that I've been noticing in our neighborhoods and throughout the city. And I have a concern regarding how many of these towers are going to be going up? And have we made any stipulations regarding being near schools or daycares or around our own residential homes? I mean, I don't know exactly the details of it, but I was hoping that maybe you guys can give me some clarity on that. And if there's going to be future towers going up, if there's a possibility of them providing a map of where these will go up, or if the city even regulates that.
Great. Thank you. Does that complete your comments, Mrs. Zapata?
No. I was wondering, you stated it's a comment and it's more like a question. And I don't know where to find these answers because I've been trying to get a hold of many people and I don't seem to be getting any emails returned. I know you stated that Governor Gavin Newsom is controlling how that's spread out. I'm really concerned because this doesn't seem to be tested. And every time I ask the questions, I get a little more nervous because I don't get answers. So it starts to tingle in my ear that the avoidance of the questions is sometimes a bit concerning. And I was hoping to see if maybe you guys can just provide me with some clarity, maybe.
Not a problem. So let me start off by saying that this is a public comment period. So you're able to come and ask us what you just did right now. We are fairly limited in terms of what we can share with you because we are not agendized to discuss a lot of these items. But I will share with you that I think that as most of us that are on this call and on this meeting, we're parents, we're fathers, we're mothers. And so anytime that we feel that anything may affect our children, it's obviously, again, as fellow parents, it's an item that I think we can all relate to. Unfortunately, the issue that you're bringing up is something that is guided and regulated by the federal government, unnecessarily by us here at the local level. And so as I shared with you in the email response that I provided, while we unfortunately cannot preempt or overturn what the federal government has told us, we do recommend that if you contact either a member that represents you in the legislature or in Congress, that they would be better able to inform you and guide you in terms of what the next steps would be in order to tackle these federal regulations that are the ones that oversee the issue of cell towers and anything related to them. Mrs. City Attorney, I'm not sure if there's anything that you would like to add to what I just said.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, principal, any health issues related to wireless, as the mayor indicated, is regulated by a federal statute. What Congress has said, and it's been on the books now for at least 15 years, is that concerns with regard to wireless placements cannot be health-based. In other words, we cannot regulate the placement of facilities because of health concerns. And I realize that this is an ongoing source of concern with many residents. Our hands are tied with regards to the federal regulations on that score. We have a very limited ability to regulate even the placement of facilities in general. As the mayor notes, and I believe he communicated with Speaker, the governor has been asked to suspend what's called the so-called shot clock requirements on wireless facilities. Unfortunately, that has not occurred, and the city's ability to do so is extremely limited. I have the answer in the other question.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So, Mrs. Zapata, what I'll ask is I'll ask, one, that my city staff please share the email that I sent to you recently with my response regarding this so that way my colleagues can see what it is that I shared with you. And then, two, I would ask them that if they can communicate with you and share with you maybe a direct phone number for a member of Congress that represents you so that way you can be able to initiate a conversation with them and hopefully they can better guide you on this concern that you have.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I've been seeing a lot of people hurting, Smarter Finals, and I see my neighborhood. I grew up here and I've been trying to donate as much as I could to the elderly. It's just, you said, it's a tough time and it's just an added concern.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate your time. I really do appreciate it.
And thanks for your time. We know that you were with us earlier and that we asked you to wait. And so thank you for joining us once again. We appreciate your patience. Thank you for what you're doing for our community. It's people like you that frankly make Bellflower the city, the special city that it is. So thank you for that. And again, I'm asking my city staff to, on a side conversation, to be able to guide you in terms of your next steps on contacting a member of Congress. So again, thank you for joining us this evening, Mrs. Zapata.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other members of the public that wish to make any comments this evening?
Mayor, at this time, there are no other raised hands that I'm seeing.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. Okay, so with that, thank you, Mr. Zapata and everyone else. We will move on to item number 10. And we have no public hearings. Item number 11, ordinances and resolutions for consideration. We have none this evening. But item 12A, we do have some items. So consideration item number 12A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to authorize the City Manager to execute Amendment Number Six to Agreement File Number 464.1 in a form approved by the City Attorney between the City of Bellflower, acting as successor housing agency to the dissolved Bellflower Redevelopment Agency and Kingdom Causes Bellflower to revise the program guidelines for the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing services for the remainder of fiscal year 2019-2020. And I believe we have Mr. Dahl Longer, one of his staff, making the presentation slides.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dahl Longer.
Yes, Travis Seis will be doing the presentation today.
Thank you. Mr. Seis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to share my screen right now for a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This item before you tonight is a consideration item that would authorize the City Manager to execute Amendment Number Six, Agreement File Number 464.1 between the City, acting as the successor housing agency to the dissolved Bellflower Redevelopment Agency and Kingdom Causes Bellflower to revise the program guidelines for the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program for the remainder of this fiscal year. As a bit of background, the City approved Agreement File Number 464.1 to fund the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program back in 2015. Since then, this agreement has been renewed annually to continue to provide various forms of assistance and services to prevent households from becoming homeless and help those who are experiencing homelessness to quickly be rehoused and stabilized. Assistance under this program includes rental vouchers, tenant landlord mediation services, housing searches, credit counseling and repair, and related costs for eligible low-income and at-risk homeless population. The current funding for the 2019-2020 fiscal year is $162,500. Following a recent discussion with Kingdom Causes and after reviewing a program report, Kingdom Causes estimates to have approximately $20,000 to $30,000 in unspent rental assistance funds at the end of this fiscal year. In order to further assist Bellflower residents and to utilize the estimated unspent funds, Kingdom Causes suggested making the following amendments to the program guidelines. Number one, to increase the one-time rental assistance limit from $1,000 to $2,500. Number two, remove or reduce the occupancy standard restrictions. And number three, add a special circumstance clause for households impacted by COVID-19. After reviewing the state regulations that govern successor housing agency, low- and moderate-income housing asset funds, staff recommends the following. So firstly, to increase the one-time rental assistance limit from $1,000 to $2,500. This change would further assist vulnerable Bellflower residents with covering a larger and more realistic portion of their rental arrears. Secondly, to maintain the current occupancy standards to prevent overcrowding. The current standard is two persons per bedroom plus one additional person in the common area. Now, this limit is identified as a common standard by the California Department of Fair Employment and Housing. Maintaining this occupancy standard will prevent overcrowding, the health and safety of tenants. And thirdly, staff recommends adding a special circumstance clause to the agreement for households impacted by COVID-19. In short, as long as households can provide reasonable documentation that attributes a loss of income or employment to the COVID-19 pandemic, they would be eligible for the program as long as their projected annual income is at or below 50% of the area median income as further described in the program guidelines. And also as long as Kingdom Causes assists households with identifying other possible COVID-19 relief assistance programs. I'd also like to point out that there is no additional fiscal impact to the city with this proposed amendment. Kingdom Causes was already allocated $152,500 in low- and moderate-income housing asset funds for this fiscal year. Would only make a few revisions to the program guidelines through the end of the year. Therefore, our recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number six, agreement file number 464.1 in a form approved by the city attorney, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That completes my presentation. Staff and also Chrissy from Kingdom Causes Bellflower is available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seis. That's a great report. Let me see. So questions for my council colleagues? Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to make note that, just for the record, that I am a board member of Kingdom Causes. I'm a volunteer, so I have no financial interest. So I will continue to participate on this matter. Thank you, Travis, for the report. Just some more of the details. I think with Mr. Pedia Berkey on the line also that, you know, probably provide some more answers. The question pertains to occupancy. And I know that Kingdom Causes worked with other cities. And have you surveyed the other cities on how they have responded on the, maybe the same question? Because I think this has come up throughout all the cities that, you know, again, that the entity is participating with.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council and staff. This is Chrissy Pedia Berkey with Kingdom Causes Bellflower. Yeah, we have two other programs in addition to the Bellflower Rental Assistance. We have a similar program in the city of Norwalk and the city of Paramount. Norwalk doesn't have an occupancy limit or any rules for that. And Paramount recently dropped their requirement. The reason that we suggested it is we still take into consideration health and safety. But what we find is often our elderly family, our elderly individuals in the city, they can't afford their own place, so they often need to share, rent a room or things like that. We also see that, you know, you might have a single parent with kids. And while it's ideal to have a certain amount of rooms, often they can't afford that. And so when we look at maybe they can't afford their current rent and we look to help them move into a new place, it's usually cost prohibitive because of that occupancy standard. So that's a little bit more context in why we were thinking maybe that might be a relief option. But we understand if the city is held to other restrictions for that.
Mr. Hamada, do you have any more questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. Councilmember Santinas? Councilmember Santinas, do you have any questions, sir?
So sorry about that. I was muted.
Not a problem.
Okay, Mr. Seis, what is the funding source for this program?
It is the successor housing agency, low and moderate income housing asset funds.
Is it through LASA or direct to the feds?
No, no, it's actually regulated by the state.
The state, okay.
Yes, so it's the successor housing agency.
Okay, so in your report earlier, you mentioned about the rental assistance is underutilized. How much was utilized last year, again?
So the rental assistance funds last year, at the end of the fiscal year, they spent $51,000, and that was of the $97,500 of the approved budget.
And how many participants took advantage of this?
Right, so Kingdom Causes last year provided homeless prevention and rapid rehousing services to 26 households. And then they provided extremely low-income rental vouchers to six households.
Okay. So are we going to have enough money if this is increased from $1,000 to $2,500?
Yes, we will, because they're estimating, Kingdom Causes is estimating to have $20,000 to $30,000 left over. So right now, they have approximately, and this is just the expenditures through February 2020. Chrissy may have the March expenditures, but we haven't received their report yet. They'll be submitting it soon. But so far through February 2020, they've expended $37,000 and they have $53,000 left over. So that's this fiscal year, and that's for March through June 30.
Okay, good. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Santinas. Mayor Protem Koops?
Yes, I think this will really help the situation. If we can allocate these funds so that Kingdom Causes has more effectiveness, I'm glad we can do this for them.
Thank you.
No questions.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, sir. I'm sorry I interrupted you there. Councilmember Dutton?
I think if any time that we can loosen up funds to make them more usable and just let them roll over or set in the account not being used is a good thing. And I'd like to commend Kingdom Causes for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. And then for me, I concur with everything. I appreciate the questions in terms of the amount of funding that we have on this, in this poll, and then how it's utilized, what we can use it for. And obviously, I think it goes without saying that, you know, if there's a time where we were, these funds are going to be, it's a good use, I couldn't think of a better time. So with that, if there's no more questions from my council colleagues, what I'll do is open it up for any public comments that we may have. Madam Deputy City Clerk?
Mayor, this time I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. So any of my colleagues, any final questions or comments?
We're ready to move on.
Great, okay. So hearing that, is there anybody who would like to make a motion regarding item 12A?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh, Sonny? Oh, yeah. I'll second it once you finish. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number six to agreement file number 464.1 in a form approved by the city attorney.
Great. So a motion by Councilmember Santinas and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Great, thank you so much, gentlemen. Again, really proud of you for our city. Item 12B, Mr. Stewart?
This is consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor to execute agreement of file number 39, 39.3A1 in a form approved by the city attorney with some call from the Edison for Schedule LS1 Option E fixture replacement rate program to replace all S E-owned streetlights with energy-efficient light-emitting diode fixtures. And Mr. Gurecki has a staff report for you and maybe a guest. I'm not sure if he showed up.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Mr. Gurecki?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight, we have a program that was presented to us by Edison. It's what is referred to as their Schedule LS1 Option E fixture replacement program. So back in 2013, Governor Brown signed Assembly Bill 719, which essentially obligated the investor-owned utility to develop a rate structure to convert utility-owned streetlights to LED light in response, and developed and implemented the LS1 Option E program. Currently here in Bellflower, Edison owns 3,000... Hold on one second. I lost my PowerPoint on that. They currently own 3,160 streetlights. And each one of those lights has what's referred to as a high-pressure sodium vapor fixture. The LS1 Option E program would replace the high-pressure fixtures with the more energy-efficient light-emitting diode fixtures with no upfront capital cost to the city. S E would continue to own, operate, and maintain all the streetlight. The agreement that we would enter into establishes a 20-year energy efficiency premium charge, also known as EPC, allowing Edison to recover the capital expenditure costs associated with the LED replacement. So what are the savings for the city? The savings associated with the reduced energy consumption resulting from the LED fixture replacement is estimated to be roughly $44,800 annually. Over the 20-year timeframe, that equates to about $896,000 for the city, just in energy consumption alone. At the end of the 20-year agreement term, the E EPC rate will be terminated and thereby provide an additional savings estimated at around $62,450 annually. So once the program ends, which we look at as year 21, the combined savings as a result of the reduced energy consumption of fixtures, along with the elimination of the rate, is right around $107,000 annually. So I believe you guys lost my PowerPoint, correct?
Yes.
We got the remote. We're good.
All right, hold on. Let me see if I can get back to it here for you guys.
It was good, though.
Yeah. There it is.
All right. So I won't go to full screen. I'll just rotate through it like this. So this was the savings part I just had gone through. The next slide here is just a breakout of a couple of the different rate comparisons. What you have here is the high-pressure sodium rate, which you can see here by my cursor, versus the light-emitting LED rates. So we have several different kinds here. We have a 50-watt, 700-watt, 150, all the way up to 250-watt lamps. So essentially, what we're seeing here is, I'll just take, for instance, right where the cursor is at, the 50-watt lamp. It uses around 20 kilowatts per month. The LED significantly lasts at about 7.8 kilowatts a month. So the light fixture technology, the fixtures use far less kilowatts, as I just showed you, compared to the high-pressure sodium lights. And again, as another example, 100-watt high-pressure sodium light, and 100-watt is the most popular light that we have here in the city of Bellflower. It uses, on the average, about 40, a little over 40 kilowatts a month. And an LED-equivalent 100-watt lamp would use just under 13 kilowatts. It's about a 60% reduction. Edison's program offers two different types of LED fixtures. They offer what is known as the 3,000K and a 4,000K light. 3,000K is kind of a warmer white light, and it kind of resembles a little bit the sodium pressure, the sodium lights that are out there right now. The 4,000K lights are definitely the brighter white light, kind of what you're seeing installed now on freeways and on major road arterial. LEDs are more reliable, which result in less outages for us. And LEDs also improve the overall lighting on streets and neighborhoods as these fixtures present a brighter overall light compared to the high-pressure sodium vapor. This is just a quick example. This is from Edison's office up in Irwindale. But these are samples of the LED lights. The furthest one to the right is the brightest, the 4,000K. The next one over here to the left would be the 3,000K. These are the two lights that would be installed here if the city chooses to move forward with the program. So in order to participate in the program, it requires that the city enter into the LS1 replacement rate agreement for a term of 20 years. If executed, Edison will initiate the permit process, provide all insurance and licenses, and develop the replacement schedule. It is anticipated that the program could begin early July 2020 and would take approximately three months to complete. So with that, the recommended action this evening is to authorize the mayor to execute agreement in a form approved by the city attorney, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to the item. Also on the call tonight is John Keen from Southern California Edison. If you'd like to let him chairman, just let the clerk know. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, if it's okay with my council colleagues, I'd like to hear from Mr. King right now.
Well, thank you, Mr. Am I unmuted?
You are, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening, and thank you, Len, for the great presentation. We have now installed, over the course of our territory, somewhere in the neighborhood of 180,000 of these lights. And we're finding that they just work really well, and we've had very good success with them. We do recommend, quite honestly, the 3,000 Kelvin temperature, that 3,000K that Len referenced. We recommend that for the residential areas in particular. We have had some communities use those across the entire community, but we certainly do recommend them in residential areas because they are a little more pleasing and a little less harsh, if you will, in terms of the brightness of the light. Many communities utilize those in residential, and then the 4,000K on major and arterial streets, as Len referenced as well. The lights are very reliable, and we do continue to own and operate the lights. So if there's ever a problem with any of them, we do repair, maintain, and replace those as we always do. So we're very excited to be bringing your community into the queue, and we look forward to changing out the lights in your city.
Were there any other questions from the council?
I think the mayor is muted, I think. Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, my bad, sorry. It was my fault this time. So I was thanking Mr. King for being with us this evening. And so with that, I was asking for Councilmember Dutton to see if he had any questions.
Now that my question was answered right out the gate, with about the 3,000 versus the 4,000, and I think it's a perfect recommendation from Edison.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Mayor Protem Koops?
Is there, you know, this seems like a really good program. Is there any downside to this at all, Len?
No.
No, I can't see one unless I, you know, or there is a negative clause of some sort, but I can't see it.
Yeah, you know, if you recall, a couple of years back, we looked at doing the streetlight purchase and taking over ownership, and it just wasn't penciling out for us from a financial aspect. This one, this one's a much better alternative. You know, obviously, there's a cost to it. The cost is spread out over 20 years. And even when you apply that E EPC rate, which is the mechanism Edison uses to recoup the cost of installing and purchasing those light fixtures, we are still running on the plus side of the savings each month with this, just on the energy consumption alone.
And I assume that they're factoring in cost increases in power throughout the next 20 years as part of the savings?
It's difficult to even try to factor that in. You know, they have to present the general rate case every three years to the PUC, and then it's a back-and-forth fight on what the rates end up being established at. I think we looked at just generally a 3% increase every three to four, every rate case. But it's still, we still will receive a significant amount of savings in the long run.
And the maintenance has to do with just the general wearing out of the equipment and replacing it as part of the warranty for the next 20 years? So am I to understand the city has no commitment to spend any money on maintaining these products?
Correct, yeah. It's just, it's 100% Edison. They own it, they operate it, they maintain it. The only thing that we're doing is factoring out the cost of the light fixtures over a 20-year period through this agreement.
Okay. And if we approve this, how far away before we have this implemented?
I think we are looking right now, based on whether the agreement was approved tonight or not. John and I have been speaking the last couple of weeks, and John seems to think that they could roll this out as soon as July. And it will probably take anywhere from... And it will probably take anywhere from, you know, roughly four to eight weeks for them to get through to all three thousand thirty-one hundred lights here in the city.
Will it require any, you know how our constituents are always concerned for downtime with their power? Will that play a part in any of this, or can they install these without interruption of service?
Yeah, it will not trigger any mass outages or interruptions of service. The power for the light systems on a completely, typically, it's on a completely separate system.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Santinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Mr. King and Mr. Gureki. First of all, Mr. King, based on your, you mentioned that you have a few installations already. Based on your experience, are these savings reasonable to achieve?
Oh, yes, sir, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we were finding in virtually every community that our estimates are spot-on. I mean, because it's a flat rate, we're able to estimate very accurately what the savings will look like, so we're very confident that you'll actually see those savings.
Okay, thank you. And Len, this program is, it's too good to be true, but anyway, let me just understand this. You mentioned that there is no upfront cost, right?
Correct.
So who's paying?
No, we're paying for, we're paying for the light fixture replacement. The cost of replacing that fixture is applied to our monthly bill. And that is what is represented by what they call the E E P C rate. So let me go back up here a little bit.
No, 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 just conceptually, who's funding this? Somebody's paying for it, right?
California Edison.
Oh, Edison, there you go, okay. Okay, so Edison is paying for it, and then basically, they will take the money off our savings, correct?
Correct.
All right, very good, okay. That's, I mean, it sounds like a great program. I wish this available to homeowners. If it is, then I'll jump into it right away. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Santinas. Always great questions. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look ahead. It's very exciting to, again, hear about this program. I've had, you know, residents always comment about the eerie glow of the high sodium, of the high-pressure sodium lights out there. You know, again, just that eerie feeling out there. So now, a question about the ones that are out there now on the main thoroughfares and some of the intersections. Are those Edison samples out there right now of the four thousand K?
Um, I'm not aware of any of the newer lights being in here right now. Not to say that Edison hasn't come in and swapped one out here and there, but I'm not familiar with any. Certainly, none have been installed as part of this program.
All right, this type, but there are other LED lights out there at the main intersections?
Yeah, on some of the newer traffic signal equipment that we've installed, it might be city-owned. Some of the city lights that are out there, the lights that we just did in the downtown parking lot, those are new LED lights back there behind Fantasy Cakes and on the south side of the south side of Oak Street right there, just off of Bellflower. So a lot of lighting that we've done in our city-owned parking lots are LED upgrades.
All right, but let's say, for example, at the intersection of Rose, Crowns, and Bellflower, there's the new type of, a newer type of, again, light standard out there, and it appears to be the LED type. And I just kind of just get the feeling of, is that the equivalent of the four thousand K?
I'll take a look at it on my way out of here this evening and.
Well, yeah, yeah, again, it's really excellent lighting. And definitely on walks, it's not obtrusive, so I'm not wearing sunglasses at night. So it's, and I do recognize about, yeah, you know, downing it down to the three thousand K for the residential areas. And I could see that as, again, very appropriate. So no, this is an excellent program. I've been, you know, hearing about something like this since I've been on council, so I'm glad it's here. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Okay, great. All my questions have been answered. I think everyone pretty much reflected my, the comments that I had. So with that, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to make comments regarding item twelve B?
Mayor, let me just give the public a moment to use that feature.
No problem.
Okay, Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, great. Any final questions or comments for anybody, any of my council colleagues?
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to execute the agreement file number three nine point three not, excuse me, three nine point three A. Form approved by the city attorney.
Great, thank you, sir. So I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Councilmember Santinas?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Coops?
Hi.
Councilmember Dutton?
Hi.
Mayor Garza?
Hi.
Great, thank you so much, everyone. And so now, again, as I stated in the beginning of the meeting, item twelve C will be taken up at the end of our meeting, so if you want to, item number thirteen, consent calendar, Mrs. Stewart.
This would be appropriate for the council to, one, conflict themselves out if there is a conflict in place, or two, pull an item for further consideration if they feel that needs more consideration. Otherwise, I'd ask for the motion for the consent calendar.
So is there any, the city council wishes to pull any items? All right, hearing none, anybody has any conflict or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to pull item thirteen F, J, and L for comments and questions, but no separate vote.
So item, can you repeat that again, Mr. Santinas?
Thirteen F, thirteen J, and thirteen L, just for comments and questions.
You got it, sir. Okay, great. So why don't you go ahead and pose your questions now, sir?
Sure. Thirteen, this is a comment, and I know that this staff that is described in this agenda item, I know that she's done a wonderful job, she's taken more, a lot of responsibilities, and I just want to commend her for her additional contributions to the city, especially with the additional job of the website development and monitoring. And I just want to thank Director Delonga for recognizing that and bringing this to our attention.
Great. Thank you. If I could just piggyback on that, Councilmember Santinas, she's done an amazing job, and I know that, again, to those members of the public, I don't know, as COVID- nineteen has struck all of us, there's a substantial amount of information that is coming out from all levels of government, and to have our member of staff be able to digest that and include that in our website for the public to be able to be informed on is really, really great. So I'm glad that Councilmember Santinas pulled this item for that recognition and considerations. Okay, Councilmember Santinas?
Okay, on thirteen J, a question for Mr. Gureki. Mr. Gureki?
Yes, sir.
What is the timeframe for, once this, what's the timeframe for the construction?
The actual, we've completed the traffic warrant for all four signals right now. And it's currently in its design phase. We are funded for the design for, through the end of this fiscal year, with the bulk of the money becoming available for us beginning July one to start construction. Given the timeline of how things work with design, the R F P process, the award, and getting the contractor on board to get out here, I think we'll probably see construction start in the late fall of twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay, very good. During the construction, will all the four traffic signals be done at the same time?
Well, yeah, all four locations will be worked on at the same time. Two of them are just modifications. And there won't be a lot of work that goes into those. The actual intersections that are receiving new traffic signals, there'll be a significant amount of work that goes in in terms of concrete, pole placement, and redesigning the little island out there on Lakewood and Main to allow traffic and pedestrian access, passing travel access to the signals right there. So it'll be a little more intense at those two locations. But yeah, they'll be worked on all at the same time. The equipment will all be ordered at the same time, and these aren't decorative poles, so there won't be the standard four- or five-month wait. We should have them relatively quick, probably anywhere from, you know, two to three months, we should have that equipment in here.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, thank you. Councilmember Santinas, would you like to share with the public the four locations that this is going to go down? I'm not sure if the public has access to the agenda, just since you brought up the item, I'm not sure if that's something you'd like to share with them.
I can provide it if you want.
Councilmember Santinas, are you okay with the len, or would you like to do it? Go ahead.
Oh, no, I got to do it. So it's basically affecting Lakewood Boulevard. One is on Lakewood Boulevard and Cedar Street, and then Lakewood Boulevard and Somerset. And then the other one is the Lakewood Boulevard and Flowers Street. And there's going to be new traffic signal on Lakewood and Main. So actually, there's going to be two new traffic signals, Lakewood and Main and Lakewood and Cedar.
Great.
And I think that's very good. Thank you for reminding us because we have received so many complaints there in the past. So I'm really glad that those concerns are being addressed, and I can hardly wait for those traffic signals to be installed because that's all for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And I asked exactly for that reason, because you pulled the item out of respect, but also we've heard from the public, and so thank you, Councilmember Santinas, and thank you to our staff for following up on this and getting results really quick in terms of concerns that the public has expressed with these intersections. This is great. Thank you. Good job. And I think you have one more item, Councilmember Santinas?
Yeah, yeah, this is for Mr. Stewart and the rest of the council, and this is regarding the the assignment of parking to the public parking space. I'm supportive of this item on the agenda, but I just want to, I've spoken with the city manager, Mr. Stewart, a few weeks ago about this, because my concern is the number of parking spaces in downtown is, it's a finite number. It's not a limited number. If you recall, as far as I can recall, the first time that we granted the assignment of parking to the public parking space was on the Belmont Court Development. I think we assigned, based on the information I got, is they assigned thirty spaces to the public parking space, and then later on, City Ventures asked for three spaces to be assigned to public parking space. My concern is this. One is, again, the number of spaces in downtown is, it's a finite number. So if we continue doing this, I'm concerned that eventually we will run out of public parking space that could be assigned. And secondly, we are spending money to acquire additional parking space. And I know, I get it, especially for Belmont Court. We were at a different place ten years ago because there were not much, there were very, there was no development in downtown Bellflower. And I think that's just one of the enticement for Mr. Fileberg to come to Bellflower, come to downtown Bellflower and do the construction. And so I get it was justifiable for them to assign those spaces, and the same thing with City Ventures. But I think now we are a very different place. There's more developments coming in. So so I'd like to ask, what I've asked Mr. Stewart is, before we go to another assignment of public parking space, is if we can have a staff analysis or a study session, because I'd like to discuss this, because the third issue that I have here is if the developer or lack of space in their development cannot afford, cannot provide parking space, they will ask the city to allow them to assign those spaces. So in terms of fairness, it is not fair for other developers who's got the space, who can provide the parking space. So I think there should be some kind of a buy-in or value to be assigned, to be paid for. I'm content with an idea so that a developer who cannot provide parking space, if they assign to the city, there's some monetary value that they will pay the city. So that's my concern, and I'd like to ask if we can have some kind of analysis or study session in the future before we jump into another assignment of public parking space.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Jeff. And you've read our mind. Jim Delonge, our Economic Development Director, prepared an analysis of the parking capacity of downtown, and we put a draft out to the council a couple of weeks ago in the Weekly, and we are looking for time to present that item in its completed form to the full city council workshop. And I'm glad you asked for it. So I think that we would do that. I would like to present that sometime in the next month or so. It's kind of, it'd be difficult to present in this format. I was kind of hoping we could get a real gathering, a real meeting with everybody in the room at the same time to answer the questions in order to do that. But what I will say in brief summary is that Mr. Delonge's study, I think, is complete and showed a good methodology, and he showed an excess of parking spaces in downtown sufficient to cover this product, and his analysis also included this project and the proposed Serrano project just north of that on the other side of the street. And Jim, I don't recall off the top, I had, I think it was two thirty-five is the number I remember, but what was the excess capacity that you identified even after this project and after Serrano was considered?
You are correct. It was two hundred and thirty-five. It also considered the Stand Up Comedy Club as well.
Correct. Right. But it's well thought, and I think you're spot-on as far as on the future development of this as it goes, and that we should assign a value to a parking space and include that value in future developments as we go forward. I think that's the appropriate policy to go to.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think there's no rush because we have plenty of time at this point.
I agree. I agree with you. I think that the product's coming forward is this one and Serrano that was developing, and the Comedy Club. Those three were kind of developing at the same time. This one was the last one in the door. And I think by the time we get to the next big product downtown, we'll have had plenty of time to do this analysis and make the determinations that you need to make on it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Santinas. Okay, great questions. Are there any other items for any of my council colleagues that they wish to pull from the consent calendar for separate consideration or discussion? All right, so hearing none, is there a motion to approve the actions on the consent calendar?
Move it, the consent calendar.
Okay, great. I have a motion by Mayor Potem Coops.
Second, Ray Dutton.
I have a second by Councilmember Dutton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Councilmember Santinas?
Hi.
Mayor Potem Coops?
Hi.
Councilmember Dutton?
Hi.
Mayor Garza?
Hi. Great. Thank you so much, everyone. So now we're going to go back to item twelve C. Mr. Stewart? Is there, Mr. Coops, are you conflicted out of this? Are you off?
No, they said I could participate.
Oh, never mind. All right, so this item, the last one for you tonight, is a, I'm going to go back. Go back to the agenda. It's the name of the temporary services shelter, correct? And located eighty-three one Cedar Street. And what happened is in a previous meeting, Mayor Garza asked that we agendize this item, potentially had some kind of a public forum to help pick a name for the shelter, because we've not really named it formally. We haven't named it at all. So what staff did, not just as a provider to help along, we kind of brainstormed and took in suggestions, as we've heard them, on seven or eight different names there. And it's just for suggestion. We're not making a recommendation specifically on either. The council's free to do whatever it chooses to do on the side of it. It can pick one of those names. It can pick a handful of the names. It can go out and seek community approval of. It can go out and seek community approval of one of these handful names or simply pick a name itself tonight. It's really up to you. And if you don't like this format, it's, it's completely up to you if you want to change it and try something else. And with that, I'll leave it to you, Mr. Garza.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart. Any member of the city council having any conflicts on this item? No? Okay. So then, so thank you for the stuff.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I, I read it again. This is a conflict. So Coops is out of this one.
Okay. Great. So thank you, Mr. Coops, for that. And Madam City Clerk, I'll wait until you give me the green light to be able to move forward.
Mr. Coops, are you off the line?
Yes, I am.
Oh. You'll need to hang up your call.
Well, I put a blindfold on and stood in the closet. How's that?
I think you may need another minute, Mayor.
Well, I'm not, Dan, do you, do you know how to end this call then jump back in for the final comments? Or were you serious about wanting to step out of the room or what?
No, well, I won't listen. I'll go, call me back later. I don't want to, if I hang up on you, I might not get you back.
Well, Mr. Coops, did you want to come back after the item is discussed?
No, I probably, are we doing council comments? Cause I have none to offer.
Oh, that's it.
That's the only item left is council comments.
All right. I have no comments. So I'm going to sign off at this point.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, he has signed off.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay. So thank you, Mr. Stewart. As I, as Mr. Stewart mentioned before, you know, considering the center that, that we are in the middle of almost finishing here in our city, I think we have an opportunity to be able to, to give it a name that, that, you know, hopefully reflects the values of our community and just hopefully gives that hope. And so I thought that, that if we could come up with some names and if everyone is, is in agreement, maybe we can get maybe three or four names as Mrs. Stewart and Ms. Stover recommended to me that maybe we could get three or four names that we can all come up with and maybe put those out to the public to be able to select from them and see which one they think would be an appropriate name for, for this facility. I think that, that if, if we give the public an opportunity to, to select this, hopefully it'll, it'll have them be part of the process and have them be invested in this, in the center that I think, you know, that a lot of us have invested a lot of time and effort into it, including the supervisors in LA County. So gentlemen, any, any thoughts or questions on what I'm proposing? Or is there another direction you'd like to go? We're all open here. Let me start off with.
Oh, done?
Yep.
Who are you starting off with?
You, sir.
Yeah. That's what I thought. I have, you know, I'm not a good neamer. I always had trouble naming my pets, but I would say keep it simple and sweet and recognize what it is. And remember when we name it, it, hopefully it is a temporary shelter and not just temporary services that, you know, the temporary as in it's, you know, not forever as far as the homeless people. All right. That's it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this council made a bold decision to move forward on this shelter and it gave people a, a hope as, as the mayor mentioned and and that opportunity to hopefully, you know, get their life turned around. And one, one name that I just had jotted down, you know, earlier this week was New Hope, New Hope Services Shelter. So I just, I just jotted that down, you know, it was just something that I thought that, that again, you know, what it's going to serve as, but also provide to, to, you know, those that are going to use it. So that's what I sort of came up with. And one side question, was there to be some kind of plaque on the building or something? Was there a plan for that? Nothing? Kind of, again, as, as what the mayor mentioned, recognizing, you know, you know, the supervisors, you know, Supervisor Han especially, with the funding and, and also Judge Carter in, in this whole process. So I, again, there's just, I was just inquiring to see if, how they definitely might be recognized. Cause I know when it opens, I assume they're going to be invited. So yeah. So that's again, just my thoughts right now.
Okay. I, I personally, I would make that request that we, you know, for however long this facility is there, as Councilmember Dutton, hopefully it's something that's, that's temporary and we're able to help everyone that needs help, right? But I think as long as it's there, I think having a plaque that recognizes, yeah, not only the, this council, but also the staff and all the supporters like Judge Carter and Supervisor Han, I think, personally, I think it's more than appropriate. So I would make that request. So thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember something is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. When, when I was reading this agenda, I mean, I was kind of, I was, I was torn. Because one, one of our goals from the outset is we're going to try to be out of business as soon as possible. That's our goal, right? One where our, our number one goal is to get out of business as possible. So if we follow the track, then why is there any name for? But at the same time, we need to kind of recognize what we are trying to do. So I, I kind of thought a lot of names and I look at the list here. But, but I think what is paramount is that we care. We care because if we did not care, we will not have made this bold decision to go against the wind at the time and come up with this shelter. So what I thought of is to offer the name of Bellflower Cares. Because Bellflower, we care as a community to help our homeless, to help our residents, not just homeless, to help also our residents, but because who have been complaining about public safety and things like that. So, and I, and so I, I think so I came up with the name of Bellflower Care.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much, sir. I, I like it. I like New Hope. I like Bellflower Cares. I, for me as well, I, I thought of it hard and I'm still thinking about it as we're talking right now. I, the, the one that, that keeps coming up for me is, is, actually there's two of them. One is the bridge. This has a, is a sort of bridge of, of helping people get from one side to the next. And the other one is, is for some reason it's, it's Hope on Cedar. Just to recognize a local neighborhood that's, that's, that's hosting this, but at the same time to inspire that hope. But I think if, if, if you gentlemen are okay with, with us selecting three to put out to the public, of, of the two that I came, that come to me, I would, I would think the bridge would be, would be something that I would propose. So with that, would you gentlemen be okay with proposing these three to the public for them to select? Maybe we can give staff maybe a couple of weeks to go out and, and have a poll or a week, whatever you wish. And they'll come back with the results and then, and then we can, we can select one.
Mayor, I think that should be. Because there is that buy-in from the, from the neighbors, especially those who are against this project from the outset. So I think once they are part of this, at least part of the naming of the, of the homeless shelter, I think they might, they might turn around and change their mind, hopefully.
I hope so too. So, Councilmember Hamada.
Oh, I'm good with that process.
Okay. Okay. Great. Councilmember Dutton?
Yeah, I am in.
Okay. Great. So then, then I, staff, any thoughts or questions so far?
Nope. Clear to us. Okay. We're good.
Mr. Stewart, this is Randy Stover. If I could just make one clarifying question to Mr. Santiness.
Please.
When you said Bellflower Cares, is there an S at the end of that or not?
Bellflower Cares with an S.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good question. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, let me just give the public a moment to utilize the raise hand feature.
Not a problem. Thank you.
I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Okay, great. So thank you for that. And so again, colleagues, just to summarize, so the three choices at this point for the public to select from would be New Hope, Bellflower Cares and the Bridge. Any, any last comments or questions? Okay. So with that, do you feel a week is appropriate? Two weeks? What do you think?
Uh, what do you think, Mr. Stover, two weeks?
Yes, we would need two weeks, I, I believe.
Cause we have to set it up, get the poll out, then tab, tabulate it. So, so we'll set it up. We'll give them seven, eight days for deadline, tabulate, put on the next agenda, the, the following agenda.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
Mayor Garza.
Yes, please.
As you, you just said the three names, the Bridge, Bellflower Cares, and then you said New Hope. Is that correct? Prior you had said Hope on Cedar.
Oh, that was one that I had come up with. I, I think Councilmember Hamada had proposed New Hope.
Yeah. Just read for clerkage ready is New Hope, Bellflower Cares and the Bridge.
Yeah. Thank you.
I eliminated my, one of my thoughts. Okay. So with that, we have to take a vote on this, correct?
Yes. Yes. The actions require a roll call vote.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So with that, is there a motion regarding the process and the names that we proposed today?
Make a motion.
I'll go ahead. Move it.
Oh, okay. So I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton. Do I have a second by Councilor something is?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second roll call please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Hi.
Councilmember Santiness.
Hi.
Councilmember Dutton.
Hi.
Mayor Garza.
Hi. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay. Item number 14, council reports. Let's start off with Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to again, shout out to the Los Cerritos YMCA. They commenced with their fourth week of distributing food to the Belfort Unified School District kids. They're at it, they're at the cap right now of 1,300 food packs, which equates to 2,600 meals. So times five, that, that's, that's a week's worth. So, so there is, I think, some talk about increasing it and we'll be watching the traffic flow. Again, it's, it's worth working perfectly on, on the campus of Belfort High School. That we have plenty of room and, and it's, and it's all moving within two hours, nine to 11:00. So and some days we were done by 10:30 or 10:45, but it's, it's all getting out there. And that was it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. That is fantastic. Let me see. Councilmember something is.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just a quick comment here. I think congratulations have been ordered for Councilmember Hamada for being elected the District 24 Representative of the Regional Council of the Southern California Association of Governments. And I was, I was, it was reported to me that the vote was unanimous. The congratulations, Councilmember Hamada.
Well, okay. Well, thank you, but you know, there was some more I hadn't included that and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Another, another leadership position for us. Congratulations, sir. Anything else, Councilmember something is?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Dutton.
I would just like to say that with this new temporary world we live in, I would like to give a shout out to all the service clubs. And that's something that they do a lot of help for this community. Lions, Kiwanis, Women's Club, Rotary, and they haven't been able to meet either and all the things they do. So they're struggling as well as, as a team is, is trying to do the good they do for our community. And I just don't want them to be forgotten, you know, for what they do here in our community. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. You are, you are so right. They do so much for our community and yeah. So thank you for, for saying that and acknowledging it. I, first of all, I wanted to just thank everyone for your patience, for working together. You know, the results in our city are showing one of, something that, that I wanted to share is that today is a third day in a row that our city has not gone up in the cases and numbers of COVID-19, which again inspires hope. I hope we, hopefully it's a sign that we've reached that, 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 that plateau of flattening the curve. You know, time will tell. We're learning so much about this virus every single day that we're not sure what tomorrow will hold. But I think the fact that we've had three days in a row, we have not had an added case according to LA County Public Health is, is absolutely a cause for celebration. With that, one of the things that we, not only in Bellflower, but in the southeast portion of Los Angeles County have mentioned is, is that we, we don't have a, a testing site to date to be able to assess how many true cases we have in our region. We see the testing sites throughout the county in other areas, but not in our area. And so because of the hard work of many, especially City Manager Jeff Stewart, we, and because of the relationships that we have in our, in our city, in our county, we were informed on Friday that we will be having a testing site that's being put together by the county itself. So it's not going to be a separate provider. It's going to be the county itself managing it and, and running it. It's going to be here in our city. So I think it's going to be an added benefit to our residents that, that if you have those symptoms that you feel maybe COVID-19 and if you go and register at covid19.lacounty.gov, if you don't have access to the website, to a website, if you call 211, they'll be able to guide you and navigate this so that you can have an appointment to be able to get tested again at the site in our city. So we're, we're really blessed to have that here. The location is going to be at the intersection of Civic Center Drive and Flower Street right next to Brackensack Library. And that will be up and running this coming Wednesday at 9:00 AM. So you can go onto the website right now or you can call 211 and they already have the site available to take reservations. So I absolutely encourage again, everyone that, that meets the requirements to be tested, to please go there as well. So again, thanks to, to my colleagues and to our city staff for their hard work on, on this and to the county for their partnership and especially Supervisor Han. And then lastly, I, I know that yesterday was a tough day for many of us, considering it was a different Easter. But nonetheless, it's a special day when we're together apart. And so I, I hope that everyone had a wonderful Easter. And so those of us that will also celebrate it once we're done with this, I look forward to celebrating with you once we are done. So with that, I'm not sure if there's any, any final comments or questions from anybody, any of my colleagues? All right. So hearing them, we are going to adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM on Monday, April 27, 2020. It is 8:22 by my watch and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.